... to item 3.06, School Site Improvement Agreement. This is an agreement between the developer which owns the land adjacent to the district's property on Sal Road. This agreement allows the developer to undertake necessary site improvements that will benefit the district when utilizing a credit against required school fees in the future. This allows us to partner to prepare for future growth and maintain fiscal responsibility. So those site improvements will occur at a significantly reduced cost and it would ensure the readiness of the site should the need arise in the future for the district. There's a cost-sharing structure outlined and it essentially allows us the ability to monitor and approve the improvements while ensuring that we are minimizing the financial and maintenance burden. So it's a win-win partnership agreement with any potential for future growth in the future. And then I also wanted to call attention to item 3.05. You'll make note on that that Mrs. Terry Underhill is listed on there as principal of OXable. Mrs. Underhill had previously been the acting principal for quite some time now and this is just the official formalization of that title. We know she's doing an incredible job leading our OX community along with Assistant Principal Kelly McGinnis and we are extremely appreciative of her efforts and dedication to our OX community. So I wanted to call that to the attention of the board.
Thank you so much for that. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
Can I roll call, please?
Mr. Sartorius?
Aye.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Shamber?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye.
Motion carries. We will move on from that to our action items, the first of which is the Architect General Agreement.
Okay, item 4.01. We recently went through a detailed selection process to find the best architectural firm to support the district's facility needs. To ensure we found the right fit, we issued a public request for qualifications, an RFQ, and received an impressive response. We had sixteen firms who submitted their qualifications, all eager to work with Menucha 201. This RFQ, of course, was advertised and we went through the process of reviewing our many qualified firms. I would like to thank Mrs. Mary Robinson, our chief school business official, for her leadership and time in facilitating this process. Along, I would also like to acknowledge and thank Vice President Shamber for his time and input in the interview process, and additionally, Mr. Weisong, Mr. Souza, and Mrs. Monroe for their participation as well. After carefully reviewing all the submissions, we invited top three firms to present to our search committee. They shared their qualifications, experiences, and references. We then made a recommendation at the board meeting on February 24th for the approval of the top three firms. Archon Associates was our number one recommended firm and I'm pleased to recommend that after further discussion and evaluation, we can now make a formal recommendation to have Archon Associates, Inc. as the district's architect of record. Archon stood out because of their extensive experience in K-12 school projects. Over ninety-five percent of their work is dedicated to pre-K-12 education. They have a strong track record with nearby districts, giving them valuable insight into our specific needs. And what really impressed us about Archon was their commitment to collaboration and their ability to deliver customized forward-thinking solutions for school districts like ours. They have an incredible amount of in-house expertise, including a registered roof consultant, life safety specialist, sustainable design professionals, amongst others. It reinforces our confidence in their ability to provide comprehensive architectural services for the short-term and the long-term needs of the district. We are recommending this evening that the board approve Architect General Agreement as presented with Archon Associates.
Any questions, comments?
I'll make a comment. During the interviews, I was extremely impressed and I wanted to mention that, that something that stuck out to me was the representatives expressed that they don't bid for every job and every opening and they're not looking for chasing business, they're looking for successful partnerships. And it was, it just felt like a really good fit and I just wanted to point that out, that I was really impressed with everything we've heard from them in those meetings and I look forward to success.
Thank you and thank you for being part of that process. Any other comments or questions? All right. With that, I need a motion to approve the Architect General Agreement as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the Architect General Agreement as presented.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Shamber?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Sartorius?
Aye.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye.
Motion carries. We will move on to 4.02, Architect Project Authorization, District-Wide Facility Assessment.
Okay, thank you, Board, for your direction and support in examining and ensuring our professional service relationships definitely meet our needs for the short-term and the long-term. So with the approval of Archon as the district's architect of record, we would like to recommend now the attached project authorization, which amends and supplements what you just approved with that master agreement. And this essentially authorizes us to begin the process of a comprehensive district-wide facility assessment across all of our facilities within the district. This assessment will provide critical insights into the condition of our facilities, helping us to strategically plan for maintenance, renovations, and the potential of future projects. The project timeline includes site visits and assessments that will, the kickoff will begin as early as tomorrow, with the visits to take place beginning over spring break. And then this process would take us through the end of the school year into the summer when we would be able to move into more of a strategic planning phase. The details are included in the report that has been provided and it's based on a square footage cost of over six hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of facilities that we have in the district. So that is a lot of ground to cover, but we have full confidence that the plan outlined will allow us to take the necessary steps to ensure we have safe, efficient, well-maintained facilities for our students and staff and for the investment that our community makes. I'm grateful that the board has prioritized this as an important need to plan for fiscal responsibility, but also with ensuring the safety and usability of our district investments into our facilities. So we're recommending that the board approve the project authorization as presented.
All right, any questions or concerns on this action item, 4.02? If not, I need a motion to approve, 4.02, motion to approve the Architect Project Authorization, District-Wide Facility Assessment as presented.
So four, move?
Second. In a roll call, please.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Sartorius?
Aye.
Mr. Shamber?
Aye.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Before we move on on the agenda, I would like to take a moment to introduce our principal from Archon, VP Trin, to come on up and introduce himself to the board, so you can put a face with a name. So VP, welcome.
Thank you. I would say that the sixth grader who wants to be an architect, I love the fact that she wants to be an architect. So usually we only see architects in Hallmark movies, so that's something that's kind of cool that she's being inspired by something else. So we can definitely come in and talk to her and show us kind of what we do in our life, you know? So, yep. So thank you again for having us and accepting our proposal and being your architect of record. It would be super awkward at tomorrow's kickoff meeting if you guys did not accept that proposal, so thank you again. Yes, we are Team Archon. I'm VP, I'm principal and also an architect at Archon. We also have Brian McNeil. I consider him our building envelope guru, so building envelope, exterior roofing, everything, right? Make sure that your building is sealed, right? When it comes to moisture and water, he's the guy, right? I always say that he has the best hand in the summertime because he's on the roofs all the time, okay? We've been around since 1979. We started in the K-12 market and we really follow through with that. And educational market is our bread and butter, or our meat and potatoes, whatever you say, like the, is what we do. So ninety-five percent of our work is the educational market and we don't chase every single district. We really try to find the district that really makes sense for us when it comes to building relationship, right? We're kind of now in the ground floor, working, building these relationships, so we want to build that trust with you with the facility assessment that hopefully will grow into years to come. Brian has been at Archon now for twenty-three years and then five years later, he meets his, you know, meets me. So I've been at Archon now for eighteen years, so we've been there for a long time and kind of Archon is all I know. And servicing the educational market and the districts is all we know. So we are excited that, you know, you guys have something very exciting for us with this facility assessment. We're gonna hit the ground running. The goal is kickoff meeting tomorrow, just kind of just go over deliverables and expectations and then maximize your spring break. So gym shoes and I think we'll run like four or five marathons in your school, so we have about six hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet. The goals will be out there on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then we'll also have a drone team to take photos. So we'll have, not only for ourselves, the architect side, but we'll also have electrical, plumbing, and mechanical consultants walk through as well. It'll be inside, outside, the whole gamut. So the goal is create a five to ten-year plan for you guys, just to see through our eyes, through our lens, where your facilities are at. So we are very excited to be your district. We are excited and thankful for you guys welcoming us in your community and we look forward to a very long relationship with you guys. So thank you.
Thank you so much. We look forward to working with you. I know many of our buildings are getting to the age, they're needing more and more, so it'll be great to have fresh eyes on them and look forward to what you have to find.
Absolutely. I like to call them vintage buildings, so it gives a little more pizzazz, so thank you again.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, we appreciate you coming out.
Next, we will move on to 4.03, Menucha Elementary Walk-In Freezer Cooler Replacement Project Bid.
Good evening. This is the project that we spoke about a few months back down at Menucha Elementary School. If you'll remember, we have the big walk-in freezer cooler combo unit that is original to the building, kind of built into the kitchen, really just causing tons of problems with the reliability, but then also the size. We have a really successful breakfast program down at MES, along just with our lunch program. We needed a bigger cooler and one that we could rely on. So the project went out to bid. It's such a specialty project that we weren't that surprised we did only get two bids, but both vendors came through, did the walkthrough, understood the assignment, and the bids were very close, which made us feel good that this is right in the range of where we wanted to be. If you'll remember, we did apply for the state maintenance grant, which is the fifty-thousand-dollar maintenance matching grant that we did receive. So fifty thousand dollars of this project will be covered by that state grant, but we are recommending Rest Core, which is a vendor that we have used very successfully in the past, in the amount of one hundred and ten and five dollars. Did I say that right? Did I say a hundred and ten thousand and five dollars? That's an awkward number to say. But yeah, do you have any questions?
Does that amount include, like, the fifty was already taken off the top of that?
No, so it's, the project is a hundred and ten.
Okay.
And then fifty of it, so it'll be sixty thousand of district ones.
Thank you.
So, sorry if it's in here and I didn't see it. With the timing of it, is that this budget or the next year's budget?
It will fit into this year's budget. So, and the way the state maintenance grant works is we applied, we were awarded, and then they give it to you right away. So we have that in, so it'll just go in and out this year. Yep.
Other questions? All right. If not, I need a motion to approve the Menucha Elementary Walk-In Freezer Cooler Replacement Project Bid Recommendation as presented.
I'll motion the freezer bid.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mr. Shamber?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Sartorius?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye. Motion carries.
Next, we have 4.04, Menucha Junior High Door Replacement Project Bid Recommendation.
So this is a replacement door project. This is internal doors that have had damage. If you'll remember back to, I believe, 2023, we did some doors, we did the replacement. This is just the next twelve that have been damaged. And so we actually put this out to bid in September and then we paused for a moment because we didn't want to keep replacing doors and not have a good solution of why they kept getting damaged. So we did a bit, a little bit of research and found there's a cover plate that we're gonna add to each of the doors and that'll just be our new door moving forward. We think that will substantially decrease the amount of damage that we're seeing. So this, also, if you recall, back in the fall, we did a life safety amendment, so this will be paid for with life safety funds. But we did have three bids and we've confirmed that the bid prices will remain valid and so we are recommending the bid be awarded to Wonderlic Doors. Wonderlic Doors has been a vendor in the district and has done, they actually were awarded the last door project and has been a successful partner for us, in the amount of thirty-three thousand seven hundred dollars.
Questions on the door replacement at the junior high? If not, I need a motion to approve the Menucha Junior High Door Replacement Bid Recommendation as requested.
And so move.
I'll second.
Mr. Sartorius?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Shamber?
Aye.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye. Motion carries.
Next, we move on to 4.05, Panorama Survey Platform.
Yes, I'm eager to share with you this recommendation to adopt this survey platform that essentially will allow us to have a system and a process to collect voice from all of our stakeholder groups. Since I arrived in the district in July, I've had the opportunity to engage with many, many stakeholders through a variety of formats, informal anecdotal conversations, and then I've also been able to review a lot of data and input collected through other sources and surveys that are being utilized. However, we do not have one consistent method of collection so that we can cast a wider net and ensure that we are collecting student voice, which we're currently not doing consistently across the board, and utilizing that in our improvement efforts, as well as staff and families. So with the Panorama Survey Platform, we would have the flexibility of research-based questions, a whole repertoire of questions that have been developed. We can customize and choose those questions that are what we want to collect voice on, elevate our stakeholder voices, monitor the impact of our improvement efforts, and essentially hold ourselves accountable to how our stakeholders are experiencing their school system, their family partnership, or their work environment. So the work of the strategic plan and the work of the portrait of a graduate are certainly drivers for our improvement efforts, but we need to be able to monitor and measure, how are we doing in these areas? So essentially with these surveys, we would develop the survey topics and questions that we want to utilize on a regular basis. Our goal would be to implement this spring to establish a baseline. An important note about that is if we adopt Panorama, the state has now recently given permission to have Panorama replace five essentials, so we wouldn't need to do double duty in that area. So that's an additional benefit. And then we would use that baseline data that we have collected to incorporate into our school and district improvement efforts and then continue to monitor. So using the voices of our stakeholders and their lived experiences, we could have a much more informed response to the efforts that we are moving forward, because perceptions matter. And it's important that we're able to kind of categorize and utilize that way, that data in our efforts. So I mentioned that there's research-based survey questions that will be relevant to our efforts, so there's a whole repertoire of questions, but that doesn't mean we're gonna give hundreds and hundreds of items. We're gonna carefully select the items. There's also an element of social-emotional learning where we would be able to collect student voice around that. One theme that I did hear from parents in engagement efforts was that there are a lot of students who seem to fly under the radar. If they're not students who are receiving intensive supports for academics or behavior, or they're not students who are kind of getting the intention, kind of excelling on kind of the high achievement side, they may not necessarily be heard. And so that's important to us, that we are asking students for their perceptions of how they're doing, what is their connection to school, how they are feeling relative to their social-emotional skills and their ability to navigate school and life. So that is another important piece that we will have a team look into further to see how that can best complement our system. This survey platform provides context. There's national benchmarks, we can track our longitudinal data, and we can use our comparison to peer schools, districts who are like us, to see how we are doing, whether it's on the student, family, or staff side. For example, related to staff and their work environment, through climate and culture. Those things are important and matter and are things that we should be monitoring. So as I mentioned, climate and culture, well-being, social-emotional learning are areas that we can get students' perceptions on. We can ask families for their input also on their social-emotional well-being, climate and culture, engagement and accessibility. And then from teachers and staff, we can also hear from them on their well-being, social-emotional, climate and culture, and leadership as well. So there's a multitude of resources. Once we have that information, now what do we do with it? How do we apply it in context, or how do we implement additional resources and support? The proposal that I've included outlines a kind of snapshot of what that implementation would look like. It does include professional development and support from the Panorama partners. And our goal would be to initiate the survey planning, build our foundation, and then continue to refine our efforts and the utilization of this powerful platform inside of our system. It will be connected to our goal-setting efforts and monitoring of progress. So provided that the board provides approval, we would initiate that kickoff in survey design and then move into planning mode and go ahead with that spring baseline. The details are outlined in the proposal as it relates to a twelve-month contract and that includes the integration fee, the platform, the support, the training, and the professional development. The initial cost for this year to get us started is five thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars, and then that's followed by an annual partnership cost, which we would incorporate into the upcoming year's budget. So that initial cost we do have in this current year's budget, and then the annual partnership cost moving forward of approximately twenty-two thousand dollars would be incorporated into upcoming budgets. So I'm happy to answer any questions or have any discussion regarding this Panorama Platform survey.
I do have a couple of questions, actually. First, probably the easiest, it says year two cost is higher than year, is that just the price going up, or is that just an expectation that it'll be a different cost? It's only twelve hundred dollars.
I can answer. Go ahead. Yes, that's because this year, we are only going to be using it for a few months, whereas next year, we'll be using it for full twelve months.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
That would be the easiest question. Second, is there Spanish embedded in this as far as options?
Yes, I know Spanish for sure and I do believe there are other options for differentiation of languages as well. Yes, I have, I don't have all of the languages, though. Ms. Maciro, do you know all the different? I can't remember.
There's quite a few, I would say.
Yes, I knew there was, I know there's a lot, but I can't remember all of them.
Okay.
Yeah, and that definitely for any families or students requiring on that language accessibility, the translations are available embedded in the platform.
And last thing, not a question, I know at the Education Committee, we talked about this quite a bit and it was very well-received and personally, I would be very excited about it, so thank you for bringing it to us.
You mentioned that we wouldn't have to do the five essentials anymore, so we can use data from this to apply to school report card.
Yes, that was a change that we were recently informed about, actually with very short notice. So at that point, we had, we were just exploring Panorama, we couldn't, you know, obviously sign on at that point, but I assume the state will allow that for next year as well. And then what they essentially do is identify the specific measures that they, the state, would collect, because we've already collected that data, so we don't have to do double duty.
I have two questions. First one is like safety and security. When the data is collected, do we have guarantees as far as our student, family, community data will be safe and secure? Yes, so that would still be the same agreement that we have with any of our online learning plat, or any of our online platforms that house student information. We have an agreement, SOPA agreement, correct, Erin? Am I using that one correctly? SOPA is the acronym. And that agreement helps us to ensure that they have protections the same as what we have within our district for housing the student data. And it'll only be used, we're not... Selling data, sharing data. Correct. None of that, it's all...
Correct.
Correct.
Yes.
Yep. It's only for our usage and then they use it to help norm across the nation, but nobody else aside from our people can look at our data. Okay.
And the SOPA, which she mentioned, that is the Student Online Personal Protection Act, and that, the contract, the agreement that we enter into with them, the terms must be compliant in terms of how they take steps to safeguard any information. For our families and for our teachers, that is not identifiable. So that is essentially data that's collected, we look at it in the aggregate and can break it down by certain groups, but I can't say that, you know, Mrs. Munson answered this question. I wouldn't know that for, you know, families. And then for our students, for the social-emotional, there is the ability to utilize the student data, because then our service providers, for example, could identify students who need follow-up or maybe some additional support, so, but it is safeguarded, all of the information is protected. This is a very reputable and well-known tool used in many districts locally and nationally, so I think there is also an established track record that, but we will definitely put scrutiny to that as well.
Okay. Thank you. And as far as the, like, collection of data from students, when is that occurring? Are parents being notified that it's occurring? What are we doing?
Sorry. Yes, parents will be notified when that is occurring and we obviously can communicate, you know, the purpose and what the topics of collection are. We are determining the schedule as well as the specific clusters, so the different measures, the topic clusters that we will be surveying the students on, and then we would publicly communicate, this is what the survey is, and then this is when it will be administered.
Great. All right, and then my last one is the questions. You've mentioned that we have the opportunity to draw from a pool of questions.
We do.
Can we create our own questions, or does it have to be whatever they have already predetermined?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. We can choose from the questions that have already been developed. Survey design is a difficult thing. Not everyone can design a quality survey question, so we will utilize, a good portion of our survey will be, you know, the questions that we can, because that also allows us to compare to other districts and have some comparison points. We can design our own customized questions as maybe a benchmark that we want to monitor, because that's important to us as a district and the efforts that we're doing. And then how they collect that, there can be open-ended questions, or there can be like a Likert scale question with the varying levels of strongly agree, agree, because how it, how it works is we don't, we want to have, you know, ensuring that we're having more people to the positive, the stronger end of that scale, so we can measure and monitor, and they can be custom questions, and it could be open-ended as well. And then we could get the data kind of in a analysis of what those trends were identified from the data. So we probably will include a small number of customized questions in addition.
Great. Cool. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
I just wanted to say, one of the things we charged you with when we hired you was, well, we're talking about all the things tonight, but it's time. Communication was a huge one. We've heard that from stakeholders, from staff to students to families, and so I just wanted to say that I appreciate you really hit the ground running with that one-on-one time with families, the coffee chats, and then I think this is an additional layer. I also think there will be people rejoicing and not having to do the essentials if that comes that way, because I just did mine. And I think, you know, the customization level will allow us to be able to get really what we need as, as things present in the district moving forward. So just another thank you to you for really listening to what we are saying that the community is needing and wanting and really bringing it to fruition. Any questions?
Yeah. What was the general take rate for five essentials?
Okay, so for our families, we haven't yet hit the twenty percent threshold for any of our buildings, but we're getting there, we're climbing, right, guys? I think the junior high's in the lead as of this morning. So no pressure, but our goal for our parents is twenty percent, so we're well on our way. And for our students and staff, we are doing exceptional. The leaders that you see sitting out there along with the staff back at the building, they are making sure that we're doing that, because if we're only hearing from a small portion, we can't be really sure what we're hearing. Now, the downfall is we're not gonna get that data back very timely. With Panorama, we will get it within like a week's turnaround. So that's another huge benefit of Panorama. But we're working on five E's, so if you have not taken five essentials yet, please do.
Follow-up question. What are we anticipating will be the take? I know, obviously, it's in the future, but... What are we anticipating will be the take...I know, obviously, it's in the future, but what are we anticipating we'll see with Panorama?
Well, we certainly want to have a representative sample, and we want to have enough responses so that we can actually utilize it. So we will set a target for response rate. The state has 20% set for 5E. I mean, if we start at that with Panorama and then work up from there, I think that would be great. I think the really important point here is if we're collecting voice, that we're using it. And so my hope is that families see that, oh, they heard us. They...we took that survey about communication, and now guess what you're going to hear next? We're taking a step to streamline that communication, because it's overwhelming, okay? So my hope is we can increase. So we'll start at 20% for families and move up. For staff and students, we should be at 90% plus, because we have time dedicated inside of, you know, the school system. For example, in advisory or study hall, where students can take that, or where we have some time perhaps in win or some other portion of time for our elementary students. And then staff, we build some time in our staff meeting, because it is important and we want to hear from our staff, our students and our families.
Any other questions on Panorama? If not, I'd need a motion to approve the adoption of the Panorama survey platform.
I'm really excited for it. I'm really excited for the...specifically the element of the students being able to answer SEL questions on their own, because they're the only ones that have the true feedback. So I will motion that we approve the new Panorama survey platform.
I'll second.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mrs. Monson?
Aye.
Mr. Sartorius?
Aye.
Mr. Shainberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye, motion carries. Next, we're moving on to Parent Square Communication Platform.
All right, continuing on the topic of communication. So the last item was related to voice collection, input from our stakeholders. The most significant theme that emerged from our stakeholders thus far this school year was truly about the communication and the dissemination of information from the district and the accessibility. So you're going to hear about two things this evening. One, where we're seeking action, and the other, that's an information topic. So first is Parent Square, and if you...Erin's going to give us some background. We did do a survey on communication, and so that was what kind of launched this effort here. So Mr. Souza, along with many other staff and leaders, have given input into this recommendation that Mr. Souza is now going to outline for us and to support us in streamlining our communication efforts.
Okay, thank you for that. Kind of pivot my...how did we get here? I'll kind of go a little bit faster since the lead-in. We really put a flashlight to the school-to-home communication. What works, what isn't, what's confusing, what can we get better at? And we got a lot of feedback, as Ms. Conner already kind of alluded to, and it kind of led us down this road, because we have a lot of apps. Right now, if I am...if I have two children, maybe one in first grade, one in fifth grade, I may communicate via Seesaw with one parent or one teacher, but Power School email or Class Dojo with another one. It just gets, you know, we just need to consolidate this. This is one of the big, you know, pain points for parents with multiple kids, especially when you get in different buildings. We just want to kind of consolidate and make life a lot of it easier for parents. So this whole project really stemmed from the feedback we got from parents and putting the lens on what can we make life better for parents? So we heard the feedback, so how do we go about it? What do we do? So we have to start looking at the solutions. We did a round one, which was district office, instructional coaches, principals and tech folks, and we looked at five leading communication systems apps that are out there, solutions, and then we recommended the top two, and brought that to a much larger team of almost 30 staff members for round two. I do want to say a quick thank you for all the teachers and staff who participated in the round two, because it was done after school hours, you know, from like four to five. And we looked at webinars from the top two leading solutions, Parent Square and the other company, and we decided ultimately Parent Square had the edge making life better. For example, TUI translation. So if I'm a teacher and if I send a message home to a parent, maybe in Spanish or Polish, they'll get it in Spanish or Polish. They can respond to me in their native language, but it'll come back to me in English. So we just don't have that right now outside of like a Seesaw situation, and that should just make life a lot easier with the multiple different languages going on. Obviously, trying to unify some of this communication, so not going to hear, 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 hear is a big thing. Another big win that I think parents specifically will enjoy once we get the communication out is the ability of, for your general kind of classroom or building, news announcements or newsletters. They may get sent out at 1:00 PM, 2:00 PM, 3:00 PM, whenever is convenient for the teacher based on plan periods or whatever, but as a parent, I may not want five different emails coming at like 1:00, 2:00, 3:30, 4:00. I can program it to just give it to me like in a digest at like 6:00 PM. And that can like help, and but the nice thing is, parents have that choice. So we're going to give parents more choice to, do you want the non-critical stuff now or do you want it later in the night? Obviously, when it's like schools closing or Bus 38 broke down, that's going out now. That's a separate kind of like functionality, but it gives, again, the parent choice that we've never really had before. And then, you know, one of the problems with the other solutions has been like with sports clubs and community. With sports and clubs, like the baseball coach might use Remind, the baseball coach might use Gamechanger, what like we can start eventually bringing in sports and clubs and even community groups. Because right now, if I am...if I'm trying to reach a taxpayer, I can't really email them, right? Best I can do is put it on our website or put it on Facebook. But we could offer parents or community members to sign up for a community group kind of newsletter, so then they get that instead of having to check like our Facebook page or our website. So there's a lot of benefits. I pulled some random quotes from the feedback of the team. Basically, you know, very easy to use, it's appealing, great tool to get more parent involvement. Everyone seemed to really like what it can do. When checking references, over 100 school districts in Illinois alone use Parent Square, so we're not just like figuring out as we go. We'll be able to leverage thoughts from other districts, like how do you guys roll it out in general? You know, you may be asking, how does Parent Square fit in? Do I still need Power School? You still need Power School. You know, grades and attendance and registration is still going to live there. That's the authority. All the communication, we're going to start pushing towards the Parent Square platform. But and then we'll also, you know, Google Classroom won't go away, and Seesaw with for the activities or student work won't go away. The idea, Seesaw does have a communication platform, so we'll be looking initially to kind of turn that off or limit that down, so we're not, we're going in one direction the best we can. The nice thing about Parent Square in addition to this is, so it's going to have a parent app, a smartphone app for staff or parents, and that's great, but we know there's not going to be like 100% of the parents are all going to get an app, right? And that was one of our fears and criteria when we're looking at new solutions. We know we're not going to get 100% smartphone app adoption, right? So what happens if they don't put the app on their phone? So the good news about Parent Square is we can still send them emails and text messages, even if they don't get the smartphone app. So we're not like discounting you, like, oh, you didn't get the app, so you didn't hear anything about all of our events. Now, obviously, there are bonuses and features and enhanced functionality that streamline life if parents use the app, but it's not just a hard stop of you don't hear anything from our district. So we thought that was like a really nice like win for the platform. So our big to-do, you know, what are we doing? The first, you know, if we approve tonight, then the tech team will be looking into getting the whole system set up with Power School data coming across and setting up permissions, roles, groups, all that kind of stuff. Then we're going to launch right into a mid-April pilot with, we want to get a number of staff, at least a few per building, so we can start building, we'll work with them, sit with them even one by one if we need to, but how to use the system, develop documentation, develop how-to videos, and get a few teachers now using it, so then we can close out the year with a good number of people already familiar with the system before the launch really in the fall. Because that's when everything...and we want to work out random kinks and bugs and misunderstandings, you know, in spring. So then when we launch in fall, everyone feels a lot more comfortable, and there's people in the building besides tech people that you can go to and like, hey, how do you do this? I'm confused on this. We're building that expertise in-house now ideally. And then lastly, start building a campaign really for when we get, when we gear up for back to school, to get parents involved, to help them create accounts and to send out a clear-cut message of like, here's what we're doing, we listen to you, here's why, and we're ready to go. So with that, that'll cost money. So year one, we're looking at about $25,000. Year two estimated is about 24. We would then be discontinuing our school messenger, Power School messaging platform at a tune of roughly $8,000 a year, so that would save us money on that regard, but that would be the Parent Square cost, estimated cost going forward. With that, I'll take any of your questions.
I have one quick one. So we would turn off the school messenger portion of Power School.
Yes.
Will you be able to link to Power School and Seesaw from the Parent Square app?
We can post, you can post links and resources in there, so that we should be able to, here's the login to Power School, here's the link. Now, it won't like auto single sign-on you in, but it'll bring you to the login page. But yeah, and then on the staff side and Power Teacher Pro and their gradebook, we plan on putting a nice easy link to Parents Square, so you can, you know, send a message out to the whole class, one kid or multiple classes pretty easily. So that's the plan.
Sorry, Dr. Staub, I think this is the chart I was looking at earlier, and I think I confused you, but I can't do two things at once. Let me ask you, the...everything that you've mentioned on the presentation sounds fantastic, and the one vital piece to it is the parents and families and caregivers understanding it and using it, right? And having an easy time with it.
Yes.
So how do we make them as comfortable as you're talking about it? Is it open house events or things we can do hands-on? Because I know I struggle with do this, and then I have to go do it. So how do we...if they're not comfortable, it's not going to be what you're talking about. It's going to be a pain both ways. How do we make it as comfortable as possible going through the first year, first year and a half?
So, well, I think the first, the next couple of months will be really telling as we get feedback from parents and teachers as we're sending stuff out. We're going to be putting together flyers, pamphlets. Parent Square already has like onboarding, parents, like documentation and videos and kind of the enhancements. But the great news is, we're definitely going to be pushing on Find Your Way Day Night, Open House, et cetera. We'll be pushing that in part of a larger campaign. But the ones who don't get on right away, again, the nice thing is they'll still receive messages through kind of the system anyways. They just won't have some of the advanced features, like, for example, this will help with like parent-teacher conference sign-ups, or you need volunteers, and some permission slip scenarios. Like, there's a lot of advanced stuff, but getting everyone on board would be kind of like the big fall push, or as many who want to. The system, though, part of our committee, though, we purposely had staff who are also parents in 201 to be like, okay, put your parent hat on. Does this make sense? And that was one of the nice feedbacks, feedback we got from those staff members, like, no, as a parent, this makes sense to me, or my kid goes to a school district that has it, it's nice, you know? So we've heard a lot of, really just nothing but positive about the whole platform.
Erin, can I jump in there as well? As a parent, it also will help streamline all communications, because like I only have one child in the district right now, but I'm getting communication from multiple different sources, and this will streamline like instead of having her track message, like track messages coming from Remind, it'll all be coming from this one message. So all of our people will be using this one tool.
So, yeah, and again, if you have three kids, one at, you know, or two at MES and one at junior high, you can like toggle between MES and junior high, or your students, or the students' teachers and message them back and forth. It has just a lot of benefits. There is kind of like a, you know, looks like Facebook, very easy to kind of like make a post, and it, I don't know, nothing but positive from all the different like reference checks I've done and people I've talked to that use it. And I'll be, if we get approved tonight, then I'll be talking to some of the actual implementation people at other districts of like, okay, what advice would you give me as we roll this out, right? So we'll be collecting that as we go, so we make, we can make our best effort to make this successful. This is, although, just to kind of always like to have a backup plan, this is a one-year deal, so if things go just completely bad, we can back out and reevaluate and pivot. I don't expect that, but I would imagine that in the following year, we might ink like a three-year deal to save some percentage points.
Just a comment, I like the idea, selfishly, for kids and a lot of things going on, to have everything together. It's exciting. I'm sure other parents will feel the same.
I use this as a teacher, and I love it. It's a great platform to see, you can even see whose message bounced back, they didn't get it, who opened it. I mean, there's tons of resources in there. And as far as the complexity of it, I was given zero training on it, because I don't have an errand. And I figured it out quickly. So it was very, very user-friendly, and so many different features we can use. It's my favorite one I've used personally.
I just wanted to say too, I'm very excited about this. I'm one of those older parents, that I'm like, where is my copy? Can you just please send me home a paper with the stuff on it? I still hang it on the fridge, but no, I'm really excited about this. And a question about your campaign to get it out to people and help them know, are we going to be sending home an actual flyer, or is it going to be an email?
Probably both. Probably both. You know, again, once we start rolling, things start playing, making more sense, and I will definitely be reaching out to other districts who, hey, you rolled it out two years ago. If you were to do it again, what did you learn, right? So we'll be cleaning a lot of information the best we can from neighboring districts who use it to have a highest success rate we can, right?
I'd love to see also, this may sound silly and you guys are like, oh, John, you're so old, but like a little mini webinar or something of like, this is how you sign up, this is how you get to this location and this location. I know if you want to do that, but you know, I can watch a video.
Yeah, no, I envision we'll be making a video for parents, honestly, and honestly for staff, too. You know, there's going to be already pre-made videos from Parent Square, but we'll probably make our own minico version of it. You know, we may or may not be doing that for IAR, we'll see. The state actually did a pretty decent one this year, so we'll see. But we try to make things so, can we take a 15-minute video and make it nine minutes and get you, you know, the same way? So we'll definitely be making things for parents for an ease of, you know, improving our adoption rate, if you will.
Awesome. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Erin. You were talking about the translation thing, feature before, and when they send it in their language to you, it translates to English for you.
Yes.
Does it go the other way? You send it back to them and does it translate to their language?
Yeah, it goes automatic both ways. So I don't even, like, if you speak Polish, like, I don't even know. That's cool, you know, just see, well, let's keep going, and that's, you know, we're, that's one of the things we don't have, and I think that will help. I know I've talked with couples, it's just like, this could be a big help for a lot of us. And it's not just the top five languages, it's like 160 languages or some thing. So it's not just boom, Spanish, Polish, and whatever is next on the list for us. It's pretty much everything. Yeah, all right.
All right, if that is it for questions, I need a motion to approve Parent Square Communication Platform as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve Parent Square Communication Platform as presented.
I'll second.
Mr. Shainberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Monson?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Sartorius?
Aye.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye, motion carries. Next one, I assume, is Mr. Souza as well, Chromebook procurement agreement.
All right, thank you again for the last vote. So tonight, we're talking about now about the Chromebook procurement. Basically, very similar to what we've done the past couple of years. We've used Providence Capital to help lease and finance the purchase of these devices, so we can get them in. We can order them now, get them delivered, and we can then, you know, prepare them, clean them, or configure them, get them ready for the first day of school. The nice thing about, especially now, we want to order, there isn't three months of backlog delay, which we're used to, you know, the COVID shipping delays have died away, thankfully, but obviously with like tariffs and everything going around, we're getting like this quote I got, it's like, it's good till March, you know, and I got it like March 10th. So we want to push through, we, as the tech team, we brought in four different manufacturers of Chromebooks, and we kind of put them through a gauntlet. We tore them all down, put them back together, and we kind of rated them on ruggedness, repairability, cost, obviously, CPU performance, and then what kind of warranty they offer. And after a lot of back and forth, and it came to a decision that we liked the ASUS model manufacturer for both solutions. So as you may recall, last month, we had an excellent presentation by Haley Bazan and Mary Jo Botnick about first grade Chromebooks. This, this procurement session or season, I always knew it was going to be a large one because it was, what are we doing with first grade? Because it was either going to be first grade, we need to buy, replace all the iPads, or we're going to shift over to touchscreen Chromebooks. And last month, I believe, we kind of like settled on first grade Chromebooks is the future for our students, that grade, and then moving forward. And so this is just like that anomaly year of getting everything in and then pushing through. So going forward after this year, we'll be, for Chromebook purchases, it's first grade, fifth grade, boom, you know, nice easy four years, four years and done, instead of like this giant seashell thing that we're kind of currently doing to try to maximize our dollars. So we're really pumped up about the direction that we want to go, and just excited about first grade Chromebook touchscreens that we've had success in. And at, at the last board meeting presentation, we had three buildings worth of like data and usage. The fourth building, Jones, has been running them now over the past couple of weeks, and it's a similar story, just very high positive remarks from the teacher over there, and so things are just progressing, and we think that's the right thing to do. So this is, how this works is we order it now, Providence Capital pays them, we pay Providence in July with our next fiscal year. I've worked it out with Mrs. Robinson for, you know, next year budgeting purposes already, and this is essentially what we're used to doing anyways. This year's just that anomaly, we're, it's like an extra grade because we're making a big shift in a replacement. So with that, I will take any questions or concerns from you guys.
I have a question. What is the situation with the iPads that we're no longer using anymore?
So we have a gapment of, so iPads right now are on generation 10, and we have a smatter, I have a ton of iPad generations, five, six, seven, and nine. So we cobble together everything, so we, all the current, when we, so at the end of the school year, we're going to collect all the iPads to clean them, check them out and inspect them, make sure they're all good, and, but the generations like five and six, like Apple basically have said, you, you know, you can't update these things anymore, they're, they're falling out of updates, so then like apps stop working and it starts getting buggier. So that's when, you know, this summer was going to be, we have to replace a large chunk of iPads anyways. So, especially with the generation five and, and six really, and seven's like a year behind. So, so that's essentially what motivated us to really take a step back, and what is the best play for us for first grade? And that's where, you know, with, again, the help of Haley Bazan and all the teachers willing to try a whole classroom set of Chromebooks in our traveling kind of evaluation phase, it's all come back very positive for touchscreen Chromebooks.
So, thank you. I guess my question is, what are we doing with them?
Oh, what are, so after the fact, so what are we, yeah, I mean, once, once we collect them all, we will be looking to do, if there's any way we can sell, recycle, whatever, whatever's good left. Obviously, we want to make sure we have enough for the kindergarten, next year's kindergarten class, plus growth, plus spares and things, but most likely some type of sell-off recycle thing. I just don't know the quantity and the quality of the devices right now until we get them all in.
You know, I appreciate that. I, I was just, because it's, like you said, an anomaly year where we're going to have a lot of different, we're normally not going to have these devices anymore. This is the last of the iPads, right? The last time we're ordering them?
So, so we're not going to order iPads yet. Eventually, the neck, now, this is, we're thinking about two, two years from now, we think we have enough iPad generation nines unless we get like a huge influx by maybe a new development, but at some point, we'll have to have another kind, can talk about what do we do with kindergarten, you know? So maybe in a year and a half, or two years, like, okay, is kindergarten going to go replace iPads? Or maybe it's a device, but we keep it in the classroom instead of going home? There's a lot of different. Sorry. It's pretty bad when I do that. Anyways, so that's a separate problem, but we hope to be able to push, not buy new iPads for, we're hoping, two years, and then decide what we're going to do.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm always in favor of outside-the-box ideas, you know, like letting the science club take them apart, anything, you know, get a use out of them, something that doesn't just get, get rid of them, so I appreciate it.
We have a, you know, a little bit of like a tech compare club that kind of is off and on at the junior high where we've, hey, we've taught some kids how to replace the screen, so it's, you know, there's like two kids in each building that like would love to do that, you know? Would have been me a hundred years ago, but yeah. Any other questions, concerns for me?
No other questions. I need a motion to approve the Chromebook Procurement Agreement as presented.
I'd so form. Second.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Sartorius?
Aye.
Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Schenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye. Motion carries. Paying Mr. Susa?
You never have walk-up music when you want to buy something. When you, when you want to buy something, it's quiet.
Yeah, well, you know, it's strategy, you know?
We'll watch for it next time. 4.08, Menucha 111 IGA for Transportation Services.
Tonight, I am recommending that the Board of Education approve the Intergovernmental Agreement with Menucha Community High School District 111 as presented. This agreement represents a significant step in improving transportation services for our students and families by streamlining operations, enhancing efficiencies, and ensuring reliable transportation. Both districts, 201 and 111, have been working diligently together to develop a plan that prioritizes student safety, service, reliability, and the best use of our shared resources. So it is widely known that our transportation has, system has been facing significant challenges for several years, primarily due to an ongoing shortage of bus drivers, and this is not just a local issue, it's a national issue as well, but we're looking at this on a very local level. This shortage kind of coincided, it kind of came into play right on the heels of a market increase on student enrollment. So what we have is a very stressed system. There's been a large awareness in the community, I knew that before I even came to Menucha 201, and the board, I knew that was a priority of the Board of Education, to truly dig in to some of the transportation challenges that we've been experiencing. So what may have worked for decades with the district and the arrangement for transportation services has been very much strained as a system. We've got great people, wonderful people, working in a very stressed system. So these challenges, though, have had very, a big negative impact on us, students and families, inconsistent timing of routes, longer wait times, we have students waiting after school for second routes to come around, we have extended travel times for students, we have supervision challenges in our schools before and after because students are getting dropped off early and, you know, picked up much later. Our transportation team has been carrying the very heavy load of all of these extra responsibilities and duties, but they're stressed. Our families have been very patient in caring and in understanding and being flexible and kind of rolling with what is, you know, the current status. They've been very patient, but many of our families are, are stressed. Students have adapted and been patient, but they're feeling the stress and the impact as well, and I can say that when I am in the school, schools after school and see our little ones bundled up, sitting in the hallway with their coats on, waiting another 40 minutes for a bus route to come back around for them, it, it definitely impacts them. And I know we can do better collectively if we look at the resources that we have. So we have a great stress on a system, we have amazing people working very hard in this system, so we've got to improve together. So currently, with the High School District 111 and Menucha 201, we currently share administrative and operational costs, costs for transportation services. We share one director, we share one transportation facility, however, each district currently has two separate bus fleets and two separate workforces that operate as separate units. So this last fact kind of limits our ability to most effectively utilize the resources that we have. So in response to these challenges, we've been collaborating extensively for the past six months plus to problem solve, because each district has its own respective challenges. And collectively, with Dr. Schiffauer, with our Boards of Education, we know that we can work better and more effectively with the resources that we have to minimize the stress on not only our staff, but our students and our families, and ultimately improve that level of service. With the investment that our community makes into our, into our districts, we know that we collectively can better service our students and families. So this intergovernmental agreement essentially outlines an arrangement that, beginning next school year, so I'll just want to be clear that this does not impact the current school year, beginning next school year, the 25, 26 school year, Menucha Transportation would operate as one unified team to provide transportation services to all 201 and 111 students who are eligible for transportation. Through this IGA, Menucha would be the administrative district providing transportation services and employing all the transportation staff, but District 201 will be in close partnership on all aspects that impact 201 students on a daily basis, to ensure our students and our families receive the highest quality and of safety and service. That is our ultimate priority, and they are still our children, and they are still our families, that we have this duty and obligation to ensure that that is the case. Through our partnership with 111, we will definitely follow through on that. So how will this affect families? For the 25, 26 school year, our daily school schedule will not change, but we do anticipate adjustments in bus assignments and pickup and drop-off times due to improved coordination routing. So we are essentially looking at routing and overhauling how it is currently operating because we know there's a lot of efficiencies that we haven't even tapped into yet with, when we're looking at bus assignments and schedules. We will still share bus assignments and schedules in August prior to the new school year beginning. In terms of transportation communication, Menucha 201 will have a dedicated staff member that works in our transportation department, and we are taking additional efforts to streamline and improve communication. And the specific procedures for communication will be shared prior to the new school year. Student support. Menucha 201 will still have the priority and responsibility of ensuring safety, and safety procedures will be outlined in writing and clearly communicated. Drivers assigned to pre-K 8 routes will receive direct training from 201 staff as it pertains to needs for specific groups or levels of students. And our school administration here in 201 will maintain the responsibility of all aspects related to student discipline or safety investigations, including the ability to review bus video and implement student supports. And as far as our transportation staff is concerned, I just want to be very clear, we value our dedicated drivers, aides, mechanics, and office staff, and we also understand how important that familiarity and consistency in that relationship is that our staff has with our families. So as part of this transition, we have previously put in place and solidified an agreement and an arrangement that affords continuity of employment for all District 201 transportation staff. They have already been officially hired by Menucha 111 and approved at the board meeting in February. This affords them the continuity of service, and they are, become employees of Menucha 111 effective July 1st. They will get a comparable position, so if you're a driver, you will still be a driver, and they will have all salary and benefits afforded to them by the collective bargaining agreement. So that was really important to us in this transition, that we were able to give that assurance of employment and ensure that our employees are able to continue serving our families and staff, although administratively, in the, the payroll office or in the finance world, that, that is happening operationally as combined through 111. We recognize that this joining of forces is a major adjustment for our staff in 201 and 111, and I see some of those faces here this evening. So I don't want to, you know, give the impression that this is an easy adjustment. I know any adjustment is difficult and change is difficult, but we are working very collaboratively with the association representation, with staff representation. The administration from 201, Dr. Schiffauer and I, along with our support teams, have also had countless meetings, not only with the association and representatives, but with the whole transportation department, to keep them informed of changes that we were planning in the earlier stages. We will continue to do that. And then matters related to the Employee Association collective bargaining would also be communicated by association representatives when that's allowable per established guidelines. So with all of that said, we also recognize that our students and our families deserve transportation services that meet the highest standards for reliability, consistency, quality, efficiency, and safety. And we also recognize that our community makes significant investment of resources into our school districts, and we want to return on that investment that is at a high standard. So the Boards of Education for 201 and Menucha 111 are extremely dedicated, along with the administration, the administrative staff, to say, yes, we are going to try this and do something different to, so that collaboratively, we can improve our transportation service. And ultimately, all families of 201 and 111 will receive a better return on that. Likewise, our employees will have a much clearer lay of the land in terms of the system that they are operating in and their service to our community. So this is a, a big endeavor, it's many, many months in the making, and this will continue to be months of planning and preparation as we move forward into the spring and the summer months. But we are fully dedicated and committed as a top priority to ensure that this is a success. So that is the long, kind of extended, brief summary, as much as I can summarize it for you. And the IGA, the Intergovernmental Agreement, outlines in greater detail the terms there, and I thank the board for all of their very thorough input and questions and suggestions. It is clear that your interests lie in serving our students and our families and also taking care of the Menucha 201 employees. I think that's been very clear in every single comment or question that I have received from President Conquest and from all of our board. So I'm happy to have any questions or discussions that you may have at this time.
Before we get started on any questions you guys have, I just wanted to, again, thank you for this. I know this has been extensive work for all of you involved. Transportation issues have been something we, as the board, have been hearing for quite some time from our families, and truly want what is best for our students, our families, and our staff members. I want to echo what Superintendent Kinder said, that we are very appreciative of our transportation staff, and I want to assure you that throughout this entire process, the, the questions coming from the board to Superintendent Kinder were not only surrounded around our community and our stakeholders being serviced in the best way possible, but also in ensuring the care of our dedicated staff members. So I know you guys have asked a lot of questions throughout this process to Superintendent Kinder. We've spent many, many times, each of us, speaking with her and asking questions, but I do invite you guys to maybe say a little bit, or maybe share some of the questions that you asked, and just kind of let people know how invested we've, we've been in this process.
I'll go. Okay. Could you just clarify for the collective bargaining agreement, how that would work with our participation?
So District 111 is the, the primary point of negotiation with the Employee Association. They are the administrative district, that means they are the, kind of the principal negotiator, and they are essentially the employers of the employees. So with that, we have a partnership, and we consult, we work collaboratively. Currently, we're working very much side by side on that. And then going forward, they would continue to consult, we are allowed to be present, have a representative in negotiations, to ensure that the interests of 201 for our pre-K 8 students are taken into consideration and are very much incorporated into any discussion that's related to collective bargaining.
Great. Thank you.
Just a comment. I know that you guys have spent a lot of time on this, so thank you for that. Apologize about the voice, it comes and goes. I really don't talk much, but anyway. So, yeah, the work that you guys have done, we really appreciate it, and not only as a board member, but also as a parent of both districts. You know, you have the kids, they've been growing impatient, and so where the end is near, and so we're really excited about that. And, yeah, we're, we trust and empower you and Superintendent Schiffauer and everyone else that's involved to, to do the right thing, as you guys are working hard to do that, so thank you.
Thank you.
My turn. This has been a problem for over 30 years that I've been on the board. Would you believe that the annex across the street was once our bus barn? And I really appreciate the effort that's gone into doing this. I know it's not been easy, it's been worked on for many years, and mainly just forced to work, unfortunately. It's been a long process, and I really appreciate the effort that, that our people have put into it, Superintendent Kinder and our other ladies over there, that have, and working together with the high school and the grade school, the bus drivers. It's been a difficult and very time-consuming process. I want you to know that you are fixing something that was 30 making, 30 years in the making, and I hope we're on our track to make that much better.
So I have a comment and then a questioner, plural, probably. First, I wanted to take a second to start with the drivers, the bus drivers and employees, specifically the drivers. This is where our students and kids go into the community away from school. This is the only time in a school day when they're not in a, a safe and secure school building. This is an extremely important job and responsibility, and it, it really is everything. Getting the kids to school and home safely is the highest priority that I can think of for, for those things. It's, it's an amazing job, and I think we have at 201, at 111- It's, it's an amazing job and I think we have at 201, at 111, just fantastic people that do that job. What it comes down to for me, all of the meetings and conversations, it's not news that we haven't met the family's expectations and their fair expectations to go to and from school safely and timely. And this is a step to try to do that, to try to meet the expectations and do something that we can do that is hopefully going to meet those, those goals. My first question, you just said something that, that triggered a question to me, the school times. This is an agreement through 2028 is my understanding that we're obviously in control of our school times as a, as a board continuing. But what was just mentioned is that that school next year won't be changing. Was that just so that's the next year? Is that why it was phrased like that? That's just the next coming year? Or do you want to talk about us being in control of our times of the school day still?
Yeah, we have no, we've had no conversations about changing our school times. If at some point in the future that is a conversation, that's a whole separate conversation. And so there's no plan to do that in the future. If there is a need or that interest or that is a priority, that would be something that we would need to entertain. If 111 is providing our transportation services, obviously we would have to take that into consideration. There are school district examples in quite a few locations in, you know, this region of the state that do have a kind of staggered schedule. But just to be clear, I didn't want anyone to think that this meant that the school day schedule was changing or anything. That's not happening. Could that be a topic in the future? Perhaps, but we have had not had any conversations about that.
Thank you. I just wanted to pinpoint because I wanted to be as clear as possible for anybody listening or anybody aware of the situation that I think clarity is extremely important with something this big. So I just wanted to to point that in. I know other folks have questions. I'll just ask, with the cost involved, our bus leases that are current are still being paid through us, so that pendulum will swing where, is that correct? That as our bus leases fall off, we'll be paying for leases that are incurred by 111 through the normal cost of the agreement?
That is correct. And Mary Robinson, who is our chief school business official, and Sarah Messi, who is our director of human resources, have been side by side with me throughout this process, but that is, that is accurate. Any leases that 201 currently holds, we will continue to pay off. As new leases come on, 111 will carry those leases. And then the cost share comes through that, us paying a portion of what it takes to provide the transportation services to the children. So that would eventually shift. We will maintain our ownership of the district transportation facility, if we're talking, you know, real property. But in terms of bus leases, that would shift.
I forgot to mention, I did drive a school bus for 111 many, many years ago. And so, but I was on the board here at the same time. So I'm a little with both. I understand both. I understand the problems with both, but I got paid for driving a bus.
I just wanted to say thank you for all the hard work, for the attention given to the needs of the staff, the students and the family, and ensuring that everyone's needs are being met to the best of our ability. So just thank you. Thank you for everyone, for the work.
Go ahead. No, you go ahead.
No, I didn't even.
I just wanted to reiterate, obviously, months' worth of questions have come from board members to you throughout this process. Really appreciate that extra time that you've taken to gather more information for us, answer our questions, make sure we fully understood what it was we were entering into. I also want to say that we fully recognize that with every change, there's always, you know, those hiccups in the road. Change is not easy, but we do truly believe this is the best way to service our students and our families to the best of our ability while still ensuring our staff is taken care of as well. Really appreciate that we have built in safeguards as far as having 201 representation, you know, in transportation for communicating with our families. All access for video discipline, that type of thing established in here. You know, we as a board are in theory giving up this oversight for our district, which is not an easy thing to do, but truly believe that this is the way that we service our community in the, to the best of our abilities. And ultimately, that is our goal. So if you guys do not have any other questions, comments, or concerns, I will ask for a motion to approve the Menucha 111 IGA for transportation services as presented.
Before we do that, I'm sorry, I did have one more thing I wanted to kind of put out and maybe you could talk about. The idea of what might change or would not change as far as supervision or discipline of students or issues that might pop up on the bus and how that still is currently handled and will continue to be handled going forward.
Honestly, on the daily operational and on the service side, there, there won't be many changes. So for example, currently, if there's an issue on a bus, the bus driver informs the, the school of that, or the bus driver informs the, the transportation department of that. The transportation director can initiates an investigation or does a connection with the school. And then together, the principal or assistant principal, along with the transportation department, review bus video. And then in terms of student or parent follow-up, that is a, the student follow-up is always done at the school. That will continue. The parent follow-up, it could be, depending on the situation, done by the transportation director or it would be done by the school administration. So on that side of, it won't feel any different because ultimately the student responsibility, support, safety, behavioral needs, all of those things are on the school's responsibility. We maintain that. That will not feel different. The only difference that families really would feel is that the, the bus times may change and, and that would be to the positive, right? Or their student is getting home in a more timely fashion, or they're, you know, able to have kind of that expected service in the morning.
Thank you.
I thank you again for all of your input. I did, you know, there was one point that Member Blount mentioned in terms of, you know, the parent perspective. And I know many of the individuals sitting up here have children who utilize the transportation services. That's the same thing. My children will soon be served by Menucha Transportation Department. We've got Mary Robinson as a parent, Dr. Schiffauer. Many of the individuals sitting at the table are also looking at this. How do we not only improve this collectively for the community, but we're considering this from a parent perspective as well? And we don't take these decisions lightly, right? We would only make a significant change of this effort if we had confidence that this was the, the right solution for us to do. So we are committed to working forward collaboratively and working through the bumps and ensuring that we are set to go for the fall.
Any other comments or questions? All right, if not, I will ask for that motion to approve the Menucha 111 IGA for transportation services as presented.
I so move.
I will second.
Mr. Satorius?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mrs. Monson?
Aye.
Mr. Shainberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye, motion carries.
Before we move on here to 4.09 and 4.10, do you want to just kind of introduce these motions and why they're here?
Okay, the next two items are formal resolutions that legally the district is required to take action on. Due to the dissolution of the Menucha 201 Transportation Department effective June 30, 2025, this formal action is required to issue honorable dismissals for, there's two category of employees. The first is full-time educational support personnel within the department. All impacted employees are noted as employees in good standing and their discharge from service at Menucha 201 is noted as honorable. The board is requested to approve this resolution to issue the honorable dismissals for the affected full-time educational support personnel in compliance with all legal and contractual obligations. This resolution ensures a smooth transition for these employees and it's necessary for administrative procedures. So as I mentioned previously, the employees of Menucha 201 have already received board approval to be employed by Menucha 111. And this was confirmed at the February Board of Education meeting. So this is a formal step that we must put forth to the board for the board to take. That would officially end their employment with Menucha 201 on June 30. Then they become employees of Menucha 111. All affected personnel have received their personal notification and welcome from District 111 via letter. And they have their continued employment effective July 1.
Questions on this one before we move forward to reading the resolution here? All right. Mr. Blount?
All right. Resolution, honorable dismissal of educational support personnel employees. Whereas the educational support personnel employees listed in this resolution are employed by the Board of Education of Menucha Community Consolidated School District 201 during 2024, 2025 school term. And whereas the board has determined to decrease the number of educational support personnel employees employed. And whereas the educational support personnel employees with the shorter length of continuing service with the school district within the respective category of position must be dismissed first unless an alternative method of determining the sequence of dismissal is established in a collective bargaining agreement or contract between the board and any exclusive bargaining representative. And whereas an alternative method of determining the sequence of dismissal is not established in an applicable collective bargaining agreement or contract. And whereas the board has determined that educational support personnel employees named below will honorably dismissed and not re-employed for the 2025, 2026 school term. Pursuant to section 10-23.5 of school code parentheses 105 ILCS 5/10-23.5 in parentheses. Now therefore be it resolved by Board of Education of Menucha Community Consolidated School District Number 201 Grundy, Kendall, and Will Counties, Illinois, that section one, the following educational support personnel employees shall honorably dismissed and not re-employed for the 2025, 2026 school term because of the decision of the board to decrease the number of educational support personnel employees employed. Names Brandy Huritz, Brian Fitz, Teresa Zowalowski. I apologize if I didn't read them correctly. Section two, the president and secretary of the board are authorized and directed to give the educational support personnel employees a written notice of honorable dismissal together with the reason thereof by first-class mail at least 30 days before the employees are dismissed. A copy of this notice is attached as exhibit A and incorporated by reference. Section three, the superintendent or designee shall also deliver a copy of notice to the educational support personnel employees by certified mail, return receipt requested and personally with a signature receipt. A copy of receipt is attached as exhibit B and incorporated by reference. Section four, this resolution is in full force and effect upon its passage. Adopted the 17th day of March 2025 by the following.
With that, I need a motion to approve the honorable dismissal of educational support personnel employees as presented.
I so form.
Second.
Interroll call please. Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Satorius?
Aye.
Mrs. Monson?
Aye.
Mr. Shainberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye, motion carries. With that, we move on to 4.10.
Okay, this item, similar to the previous, is also a resolution. This one pertains to part-time educational support personnel. Due to the dissolution of the Menucha CCSD 201 Transportation Department effective June 30, 2025, the district must take formal action to issue non-reemployment notices for all part-time educational support personnel employees within the department. All impacted employees are noted as employees in good standing and as such, their discharge from service at Menucha 201 is noted as honorable. The board is requested to approve the resolution to reissue non-reemployment notices for the affected part-time educational support personnel employees in compliance with all legal and contractual obligations. This resolution ensures a smooth transition for employees while fulfilling the necessary administrative procedures related to the department's dissolution. Each impacted employee has already received approval for employment with Menucha High School District 111, as confirmed at their February Board of Education meeting. Additionally, all affected personnel have received personal welcome letters from District 111, ensuring their continued employment effective July 1, 2025.
Resolution, non-reemployment of part-time educational support personnel employees. Whereas the educational support personnel employees listed in this resolution are employed on a part-time basis by the Board of Education of Menucha Community Consolidated School District Number 201 during 2024, 2025 school term. And whereas the board of, the board has determined to decrease the number of educational support personnel employees employed in the district. And whereas the board has determined that the part-time educational support personnel employees should not be re-employed for the 2025, 2026 school term. Pursuant to section 10-23.5 of the school code parentheses, section 105 ILCS 5/10-23.5 in parentheses. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Menucha Community Consolidated School District Number 201 Grundy, Kendall, and Will Counties of Illinois, that section one, the following part-time educational support personnel employees shall not be re-employed for the 2025, 2026 school year. Names are Catherine Ayers, Fred Brezovic, Ariel Crump, Rich H. Fisher, Melba Groves, Jesse Hoover, Amanda Klecker, Deborah K. Lee, Karen A. Martin, Gina M. Messina, Amber Nasser, James D. Ordorff, Christine Piclo, John Ringer, Laura Roddely, Sophia Snow, Teresa Thomas, Melissa Winterbottom, Eris Eliza Beckhag, Larry Breone, Breones, Larry S. Engel, Rene Phonic, Cheryl Hadley Richter, Michelle Hutchins, Jessica Kowaliski, Rosa Linda Lojotan, Nicholas Martinez, Deborah Meyer, Maritza Osingera, Lynette Parker, Tina Pizalewski, Jerry Robinson, Beverly S. Rogers, Karen Sterns, Heidi Thompson, Kimberley C. Wurzinger, Ronald Bean, Rachel Calvin, Marlene Fisher, Kayla Gant, Patricia Hannah, John Kessy, Michael Leach, Jahira Lira, Anthony Messina, Michael Michiner, Kristy Olson, Vincent Perkins, Robert Rennie, Cecilia Rocket, Tammy Sheeky, Janice Tharp, and Wendy Thompson. And again, I apologize for any mispronunciation. Section two, the president and secretary of the board are authorized and directed to give the educational support personnel employees a written notice of non-reemployment by the first-class mail at least 30 days before the employees are dismissed. A copy of this notice is attached as exhibit A and incorporated by reference. Section three, the superintendent and designee shall also deliver a copy Section 3, the Superintendent and Designee shall also deliver a copy of the notice to the educational support personnel employees by certified mail, return receipt requested by personally with a signature receipt. A copy of the receipt is attached as Exhibit B and incorporated by reference. Section 4, the resolution is in full force and effect upon its passage. This is adopted the 17th day of March 2025 in the following vote.
Thank you for that. With that, I need a motion to approve the non-reemployment of part-time educational support personnel employees as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
End of roll call, please. Mrs. Munson?
Aye.
Mr. Shamber?
Aye.
Mr. Blount?
Aye.
Mr. Sartorius?
Aye.
Mrs. Tenelli?
Aye.
Mrs. Conquest?
Aye, motion carries.
Before, before we move on, I'm sorry, I don't want to, go ahead, were you going to say something?
Yeah, but go ahead.
You can go ahead, before you move on, I have something.
Okay, I just wanted to say again, with those actions or those motions passing, again, we thank our District 201 Transportation employees. We know that we have a slew of fantastic people that drive our children every single day and get them to and from school safely. We do recognize the challenge and the worry that comes with big change, and that we are confident that our administration, along with your bargaining teams, will reach an agreement that really takes care of our staff and is able to service our community. So truly thank you, and wanting to know that we did not enter into this change lightly.
Thank you. You, you, you did a good job taking something I was going to say, I appreciate it. I do want to mention that this is very serious for me, this is a, these are real people, and this is a real situation, and it brings to light into my mind a situation, districts across the state, across the country, read resolutions like that when that's the, the end for some folks of that employment, and I'm, I'm grateful that I'm wishing them well with, with supporting our students going forward instead of a different situation. That's, it's, I'm thankful and grateful that Manuka 201 specifically is in a position to, to serve every one of our students and families and treat our employees with dignity and respect, and I'm, I'm looking forward to good things in the future.
I echo that, and you know, having, sorry, having to read the names, they're real people, they're not numbers, right? Brings weight to it, and so it's, I'm glad that is a requirement, and it makes it very real, and we appreciate all the folks.
Okay, anything else? If not, we will move on to our discussion item for Final Site.
Okay, this topic is the third of three related to communication, and this is specific to our website, our, our presence online. So Jalisa Wilson, our Community Relations Coordinator, is kind of getting set up right now to give us a quick overview of where we're at with our current status and what will lie ahead for upcoming recommendation.
Good evening. So currently, our district and our school websites, they've been running on a theme that is very old, and it's been the theme that was chosen about six and a half years ago. So when they reached out and said that our current contract will be expiring in June 30th, I kind of figured it was probably time to get a new theme going and re, kind of give refresh to our website. So why? As I said before, our current contract is expected to expire June 30th. So the question was, okay, so do we renew it and just leave as is, or do we kind of change some things? And some of our families have made it known through like the different communication things that we've done that our website's not very user-friendly, and they've had a very hard time just finding things, and that's kind of not good on our part. So I figured, yeah, it was time to go forth and kind of renew our website there. Also, according to Final Site, our theme is outdated. It's not responsive, so if you've ever used the theme on your phone or your tablet, you probably noticed it was a little wonky, and that's why. It's outdated, Final Site does not update it anymore, so that was on their recommendation as well, to just go forth and get a new theme, and kind of refresh our website and get rid of a lot of the old content that's been hanging around on there. And it's also kind of just a opportunity to enhance and refresh our website and make it more user-accessible, and so that's our goal, is to ensure our website is modern, accessible, and easy to navigate, meeting the needs of all users. So some of our goals, as I previously stated, we're going to enhance the functionality and user experience, so that means creating a website that's easy to use, easy to access, whether you're on your mobile, your tablet, or your desktop, and ensure long-term sustainability and cost-effectiveness, because this costs money, and we want to make sure that it's cost-effective for the district as well as just long-term, we can ensure that the website lasts a little bit longer, and then align with our community and our educational values. So that's kind of like our strategic go-for. So these are some of the themes that were, they kind of told me about, and then they demonstrated them for me, so I, when you go into the theme, if I can get it to load, there you go. Okay, so it doesn't want to load correctly. So when you go into there, the fun thing is, is you can play around with this demo. So you can go in there and change the theme, you can do a theme or a flex theme. Flex theme means you can get a little bit more for what is included in the theme. You can add your own colors in there, and you can also include your header, but if you can see that, that's how it looks when you go in and you change the logo and add like your own little thing, so that's Madison, this is Westbrook. So if you want this information and want to play around with the themes, I can also share this with you, but that's Westbrook, and then, what'd I do? And then this one is Bristol. But there, these aren't the only three themes, they have a ton of themes on there, and you can play around and change everything. These are way more responsive than the other theme that we do have, and it'll look much better and kind of align more with where we're trying to go with our vision for the district. So this is kind of like the budget layout, so this is what they proposed to me, Final Site did, and this is a three-year deal and a five-year deal. This is on-brand with like what we did before previously on a year-to-year basis, so their prices haven't changed too much, but if you can see over time, if you extend it for five years, you get a little bit more money off. Any questions so far? Because I feel like I'm going really fast.
Are there other places, like Final Site is who we have now?
Yes.
Where, where else could we do this?
The other one is Aptigie, but what I found is, is that their websites all look the same. They don't have like as much, how can I put this? They don't have as much like design choices for you, like it's, like if you've ever seen a few school districts around here use Aptigie, and they all look the same, and that's not what we're going for. We're not the same as other districts, so we kind of want to showcase our vision for our district and tell our story. So Aptigie was on the table, but it, I just didn't like, like their design choices that they had, and they were very limited, whereas Final Site, they are constantly evolving, constantly changing, adding new features and all of that, so that's why I kind of was like, well, you know what, we're already with Final Site, let's see if we can make some changes and make it a little better for our community.
So before you switch the slide, I'm sorry, first the campus sign, other webs, it's like my bucket list, we're going through it this year. With this slide, this slide, I don't know if, if you were asking even about what we thought about which one, but to me, it, it seems pretty clear, you know, where the, the three-year cost and five-year cost are basically the same, so you'd have no doubt what to save money after the, it seems like the five year is a pretty obvious choice, if it could only go up otherwise.
Yeah.
So, but no, thank you for bringing this up.
Of course.
One more quick one, will our information just transfer over, or we get an opportunity to reprogram everything?
We get, Final Site gives us a project manager. The project manager will work alongside whomever would probably be the point of contact, which would be me, and we will work together to create a timeline, and along with the project manager, I'll be going through and looking at like all the themes on the backend, like what do we have, can we get rid of any of this, is this old content? So we'll be able to shift over our own content and dictate what we need and what we don't need.
Do the mobile, does the mobile site work better than the one we have two, or is it more like user-friendly? I guess right now it's like you have to go into like six different menus to find what you're looking for?
So that's what the redesign would be, is, is you're going through and you're making sure that you're changing the format essentially, like how can we redesign this so that it is more user-friendly and that when people use the mobile app or they use the browser on their phone, is it accessible or responsive?
Yeah, I know that's been a huge thing, people have commented on us just being difficult to find things on the website, but I think that's wonderful if we can make it more user-friendly, for sure. We could even send out a survey with our new survey program about what people want on the website.
And I will also say this, because I have some knowledge in like ADA compliance, and because of my grandfather who's legally blind, our website, if someone were to use it who wasn't, who was legally blind, they wouldn't be able to access most of what is on our webpage. So we want to be able to, even if we never have someone that is legally blind using our site, at least we can say, well, it is accessible if they need it.
Other questions or comments on this? I think this is a much-needed update.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you, Jalisa, for putting together a snapshot of that process. The presentation is linked in Board Docs, and those templates are accessible if you click on the slide that she presented, so take a look, they're definitely much more presentable and engaging and accessibility, as well as access to information are key considerations, and looking at the analytics of how our information is currently being accessed or what the frequent searches are for, that helps to inform us as well in terms of placement and accessibility of content. So it's going to be a big spring cleaning effort, right? But it's, it's good, it'll be a refresh, and I hope that it will be, you know, greater service to those who access our website.
So, sorry, while we're on next steps, it says six to nine weeks, and I know we're just talking about it, we're going to have to go through it and give you, give you all time. What would be the timeline for it to look like implementation? Is it summer next year, or we, is it?
Oh, yeah, it would, we hope to have a recommendation in the April Board meeting, and then through, let's see, May, June, July, we will be able to launch it for the new school year, and it basically will live behind the scenes until it's ready to go live. So our current site will still be accessible and present, and then, well, we kind of are on a little shorter timeline because of the June 30 piece, but that is our goal. So by the end of June, we can hit that button and launch our public presence, and if we can move swiftly through the, the content cleanup through each of the closets of our house here, we can hopefully accelerate that a little bit.
Thank you so much. With that, we will move on to board topics.
I do have one topic to talk a little bit about. We had a situation occur where a child checked out a library book that was not age-appropriate. The parent contacted me, and I referred them to Gina Peakle.
Can you pull your microphone a little bit? Thank you.
This is better. Okay, I always do that, I'm sorry. We had a situation where a child received a library book that was not age-appropriate. Parent contacted me, and I referred them to Mrs. Peakle and Mrs. Kinder, and firstly, thank you so much, it was handled so well, the parent was so happy with the outcome, but then we did discuss some review of our library materials and what we have going on there, so I'd just like to turn that over to Superintendent Kinder.
Yeah, absolutely. That has been a need that I believe has been noted even prior to my arrival. This was the first instance that's come to my attention about a, you know, inappropriate material or resource in the library, but it still illuminates the need to ensure that we have a process for selection, to ensure books are not only age-appropriate, but are supportive of the content, supportive of the curriculum, and a whole slew of criteria that we want to ensure. So Mrs. McCarroll, our Chief Academic Officer, has had contact with our LMC Directors, we have two in the district, along with our library associates, and we all definitely agree there's a need for a process to be put in place, so she'll just comment on that.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, so we currently do have two teachers that have a Master's in Library and Information Science degree, so they are qualified librarians in the district. Recently, I'd met with the media curricular team, the K-4 team, there's one person from each building, and we had, had talked about this, working with Dr. Staub a little earlier in the year, we had some teachers ask about some, some context books to help build background knowledge for, for kids in a, it was second-grade wit and wisdom. So we recognized there was, we kind of have an informal process, but we don't have anything formalized, so we are looking to that. Recently, I've contacted the media teachers, we are working in May, we're going to have a, half the day is going to be some curricular time, and the other half will be looking at processes. We kind of have a running list going of different districts that have some, as well as looking at like the School Library Journal is one of the resources we use when we check to see if a book is age-appropriate, and maybe what a summary of it is. Additionally, the junior high and intermediate school kind of, kind of got a list of their adult, their young adult books, and are kind of, are going through those and double-checking with whether it's the Kirkus Reviews, the School Library Journal, or another publishing source about the, the age-appropriateness, and then a summary of the things. Additionally, we're kind of looking into that, how did this happen on the backend to, to make sure we are putting things in place to make sure it does not happen. We think it was maybe donated from the book company that has done some of our fairs, because it was a published and award-winning book. We think maybe that's how it got in there, but regardless, we're going to also look at that to make sure that our processes handle that part of the situation too, so it does not happen again.
Thank you, Adrian. It's definitely a large undertaking, but a very necessary endeavor to ensure that we have appropriate materials for our kids, and even if it is an award winner or something, we still do due diligence in the level of scrutiny in ensuring that it meets our standards and our criteria for what we would want in front of our own children. So I thank you for referring the parent to us, but I also know that there's a larger need, so that is certainly what our team will do.
No, so I'm going to take a, I have a parent topic, I'm going to move it into a board topic tonight because I think it's important. I was picking up my son from track before and today, and I have to say, I think I believe strongly in when you see somebody doing something great or above and beyond, you have to call it out, you have to share it with people. So I've seen Athletic Director Petrowski, Assistant Principal Tataro, Dr. Staub, this is two hours after the day ends, and these folks are in the parking lot making sure our students are safe, making sure there's order, and it's not a little thing, I think that's a one, a one snip, snapshot, sorry, but these are leaders that see a problem and don't send an email, they, they get out and they put on a vest and they help people be safe, and I, I just can't thank everybody enough that it's, it's a, a long day, and I'm sure at the, at the end of the day, everybody wants to go home, but we want the kids to be safe first.
Thank you, Adam, and like always, you do a good job of thanking people, and right behind that, I wrote it down to make sure, I wanted to thank Mrs., Superintendent Mrs. Kinder, and also Mrs. McCarroll for inviting us out to Institute Day and having Brianna Morales, Teacher of the Year of 2023, out, and she shared her story, and it was amazing. It was so amazing, very touching, and then she happened, I'm a little bit older than she is, but she was in my school district that I grew up in, so just, it was quite amazing, and I'd be really interested to hear the feedback. So just, it was quite amazing, and I'd be really interested to hear the feedback from the teachers that got to hear her message. It was, I mean, she tied everything in so that everyone could relate. So thank you again for having her in and inviting the board to it. Thank you.
This week, it was brought to my attention that our subpay is drastically lower than neighboring districts and that that may be causing some issues in our buildings. So I brought that up to Superintendent Kinder to discuss that a little bit. She assured me that we are working on that, and so I'm hoping that that's something that we'll get to discuss at a future meeting.
We are definitely looking at pay. We're also looking at our recruitment efforts, where we can make some connections, as well as onboarding, the support that we provide, because it is, it's a tough job. And we can attest to that because we've been guest co-teachers in classrooms. And so there's a lot to know, right? You're not just babysitting kids, you're navigating a lot from technology to curriculum and so on and so forth. So we want to set people up for success and also retain the subs that we do have, because when we don't have them, then that transfers to the building aides and associates and teachers to pick up where that's needed. And so it's a definite need. We're taking a look at it. We've gotten input from some other individuals. We will do a comparison. We live in an interesting space here in Menucha 201. We are in Grundy County, and we can compare ourselves to Grundy County, but we're also bordering Will and Kendall and competing with subs, for subs, with those districts as well. So we need to continually refresh and, you know, improve our efforts in those areas. So more to come.
For tonight, I just want to remind the community that the consolidated election is coming up here, April 1st. School board elections are a part of that. We have seven candidates running for our four seats. I know it is difficult in our area to get information on candidates, just without news coverage and things like that. So I did post on my board Facebook page a link to everybody's contact sites, whether it be their Facebook page, website, email, whatever it is that they have, so that there's somewhere you can go to look for that information. Encourage people to reach out to candidates and become an informed voter. Our local elections are very, very important to our local community, so really encourage everybody to get out and educate themselves and then make their voice heard in the, with their vote. Any other board topics? All right, with that, we'll move on to administrative reports. So that was a lot of board topics tonight.
A lot of board topics. It's a busy time of year. That's how this definitely feels. We have a much awaited spring break on the horizon, but it's busy planning and working, that's for sure. Our leaders have all posted their building updates and memos in the reports, and I can just tell you that they are busy, not only with events and family engagement and students and teaching and learning, PD, all of the things. So just take a quick look at those, and you can just see how many great things are happening in all of our buildings. So thank you all to our leaders. And then the same holds true for our district leaders. And if you want to make a comment on any of your reports, you can speak up now. I know we've got a lot of ground to cover this evening, but any items of note? Dr. Staub?
Certainly, yes. I just have a few things that I want to draw attention to. First, a follow-up from Vice President Schaumberg's comments about the dismissal at the campus. We understand that right now it is very busy with our spring activities in motion, and we're dismissing about 400 students from the campus at 4:15 every day. So we do encourage families to utilize the activities shuttles that go back to the elementary schools. We encourage carpooling. But then we also ask those families that are coming to the campus to pick up, to please follow the directions that we're giving. Our top priority, I know everybody is super busy. I know, like, when I picked up my own daughter from track today, I had to run her to another activity before the board meeting. We get that everybody's busy, but the top priority is keeping our students safe. So when we have cars that need to get in and out of that campus, we just ask that they follow the flow of traffic. Couple other tidbits to highlight, as Ms. Kinder has shared, we are planning for the future, so we are planning our summer activities, and families and staff can expect to see more information coming on our summer enrichment programs, our summer camps, the summer bridge program, as well as the Right at School program that will be occurring throughout the district. And then I did also want to give a highlight for our, the free dental clinics that our school health services put on this year. We had 273 students participate in those free dental exams. So out of those, students had scaling, completed cleanings, fluoride treatments, and then individual sealants placed on their teeth as well. So just a really great service that our school health services have been able to provide our students. Unless anybody has additional questions. I was going to give a shout-out to the PD, but since our professional development, but since we've already had that shared, I'll go over that one. Yep.
Thanks so much. Okay, Ms. McCarroll?
All right, just a couple notes. I do want to follow up on the March 7th PD and just a shout-out to our instructional coaches. They did an amazing job of helping the PD Steering Committee to ensure that everybody was attending the keynote speaker, but then on the backend, on the flip side of that, they were able to attend a session of their choice. And the coaches did an awesome job of hand-scheduling all of those people into their sessions. Everybody got into their first or second choice, which was outstanding. In addition to all the PD sessions, many of them led back at their buildings in the afternoon, so just a big shout-out to them. Also, a thank you to Erin for all the IAR prep he is doing. Mrs. Monson, he talked about, you joked up a little bit about his videos, but his videos are phenomenal. He's always looking at ways to do shortcuts and stuff for our staff, so even if it's a 10-minute video, can he do it in seven or whatever? And he, him and his tech department have done a really good job of prepping our staff, our students, and our administrators for the Illinois Assessment of Readiness. So I want to give them a shout-out to them. And then the last point in my report that I wanted to note is the Core Phonics Survey Data Collection will be happening starting April 14th through May 14th. But I do want to, I just want to be upfront and forward about something between our Core Phonics Survey Data, the NWOA map reading scores, teacher feedback from the literacy, the Illinois Literacy Plan Committee, and then just some of our internal assessments. We see that there is, there's a need to increase our phonics support for our students, especially in terms of third grade. Our kids currently don't necessarily get the whole scope of phonics instruction, and we try to kind of piecemeal and put things together and do some small group instruction, but it's just, it's just not equitable for all of our students. So that is something that we are looking into, to how to accomplish the goal of increasing phonics support for our students, especially in third grade. So we are looking through professional development, curricular supports, and explicit phonics instructional minutes. I'm hoping to have a recommendation for you guys next month where we want to move with that, but I did want to kind of, you know, grease the wheel a little bit, that our data is showing us that we, this is a need for our students, and we're looking at ways to attend to it. Questions?
Okay, any of our other district leaders have any other updates of note? Dr. Massey?
There we go. I'll be super quick. I just wanted to touch base with you guys. If you look at that personnel report that we submit every month, it's heavy. And it's heavy because this is the time of the season where we've got folks that are leaving us, and then we're also hiring folks. So a giant shout-out to our principals and our department leaders. They've been interviewing like crazy and juggling all the other end-of-the-year stuff and the PD work that they do. But, you know, I reached out to a couple of them today, and I'm like, how are we doing with that spot that we still have open? And we've got interviews set up for Thursday of this week, all the way through, you know, tomorrow, for goodness sakes, and April 9th. So they're juggling all of these things, but what's wonderful about this is they're getting some really great candidates in and are coming away from those interview sessions with choices to make, which is always a lovely problem to have. Some of the harder-to-fill positions, we took our show on the road, hit up a couple of job fairs and got some candidates, some interns. We're looking to be flexible with some of our, historically, we've not had that many intern candidates in, let's say, our psychologist pool. But we're looking, working with the MEA to partner with them. That's a pipeline, right? Like, you get a student teacher in and you're more apt to have an experience with them that would, you know, have them want to commit to us and us commit to them. It's the same thing with some of these other positions, and those opportunities just haven't really been maximized in our district before. So we're looking to capitalize on that, which would then hopefully increase the amount of those folks that would be wanting to work for us. We have some vacancies currently that we're having a hard time filling, and we're hoping that those interns can help us next year. But also being creative, I know Dr. Staub and I talked with one of the organizers at the job fair we went to that focuses on school psychs, and they are trying to be creative as well, because they recognize the pool of candidates for some of those positions just isn't there anymore. So just looking to be a little more creative outside the box, how we can fill these positions. But it is ongoing. I just wanted to touch base with you about that, let you know that next month they'll probably be busy as well, because those folks are going to be recommending replacements and other folks for hire too. So just, yes, sir.
So I do have a question, and I'm not certain if it's the time of the year or just a coincidence anomaly, but I'm noticing four special education teachers on the same report and the behavior specialist, and some of them, I did it again, I hit the microphone, and some of them have been filled already. So it's not a question of spots. My question is, is this just the time of the year, or is there something else that we're looking into?
So I, yes, we looked at that too, and we're like, hmm, interesting. Yes, it is the time of the year, absolutely. This is when, you know, folks tell us they're leaving us because they know evaluations are getting completed, those things just all kind of bubble up at this time. Secondly, though, I think there's a definite shift. You know, if you talk to younger teachers, you know, they can shop around. You know, they may start here, get some experience, parlay that somewhere else. And I think, I think that's happening more now than it was back in the day when I started. You know, you get your foot in the door and you would stay in a district, and I think there's a little more shopping around going on, on the part of the candidates. You know, and we also, you have to keep in mind, we've added more of those positions over the last couple of years, so there's just more of those folks that we're employing. But it is definitely that time of the season where we start to kind of fluidly move folks in and out.
Thank you for bringing that up. I had forgot that we had added a bunch of positions, so there are actually a lot more things going on. But I just asked because you put it on the screen, I was, thank you.
Thank you for sharing about some of the things that you guys are doing, and you're getting creative with going to different job fairs. And I know that, I mean, even like for you, you're only one person, and you can only be so many places at one time. So what are you, what are you and your team, like, how are you able to be in multiple places? Or like, are you able to kind of get like substitute helpers for the job fairs? Or how do you go about it? Because I only, you're, I know you can do a lot, and you know, so how are you, are you able to?
You know, I'll tell you, I was, I had an opportunity to spend the day with Dr. Staub and took her on the road with me down to ISU. Ms. McCarroll came with me to Eastern as well. So we, I, you know, they've got great personalities and can rope folks in too, and we just talk and talk and talk to people and sell Menucha. But no, it is a bit of a challenge, it really is. There are other job fairs that I didn't hit this year that we need to go to. I've talked to, they, even at the job fairs, like Adrian and I were talking down at Eastern, that attendance last year at that same job fair wasn't there. Like, there just weren't people coming to it. The kids, the kids from school weren't showing up. So it's a moving target right now, where traditionally job fairs have been the places to go, but how do we get creative? So partnering with universities is certainly something that we try to do. USF, we have a wonderful partnership with them, but also trying to spread that out. Dr. Staub and I were working, this lady was from the University of Chicago that we were speaking to, and maybe trying to draw from other universities that we haven't traditionally partnered with. So it truly is, I think, a bit of a crossroads right now, where the market is much different than what we're accustomed to, and just trying to figure out how to hit that moving target. So, you know, some days we do good, some days we aim to do better, but trying to figure out this equation and get it solved for us. But we are still pleased to be seeing a good amount of folks applying to our positions, so that, like I said, it is a nice problem that our principals have choices to make with some of the, you know, with all the fills that we have going. So I appreciate that, but it is a work in progress, and we're still trying to figure it out.
You may have done this already, I'm just asking. Speaking of the videos, have you guys done like a promo video, like come work to Menucha?
No, I'll have to partner with Mr. Susan for that. That's not my wheelhouse so much. Everybody will tell you, I talk too much for a quick video. But no, it's definitely, that's the thinking outside the box, you know? And we have some internal folks that have some ideas about how to draw other people in from experiences that they have. We're talking about setting up a committee where we can, you know, meet with folks and really brainstorm. So like I said, we're trying to get creative because we see that the times they are changing. So we just need to make sure that we don't get caught behind the wave and instead we're ahead of the movement, so. Maybe you'll see my face on a video soon.
Dr. Massey, do you want to explain the Apple Track Consortium that we're a part of as well, where we can kind of mine for candidates through there?
Absolutely. So when we post a position, we put it on the Apple Track Consortium, which is kind of the Grundy-Kendall area, and there's a bunch of other schools in there too. So if I'm an applicant, I go in and I say, I want a special ed position, and I could specifically see that Menucha has one, and slide my stuff through to Menucha. And that's a, the principals then have access to those positions that are created specifically for their buildings, and anybody that plops their stuff in there pops right up for our principals to see. It's got all their info in there, their references, their applications. All of that jazz exists there, and that's wonderful and right there for all of our positions. But when you get down to the nitty-gritty of maybe we don't have a lot of candidates, you can go into a position pool. And that is anybody that has ever put their stuff into Apple Track, and it could be for a school district, Yorkville, for example, they're in the consortium as well. But our folks go in, and I know they do this, they mine in there, and they find people that maybe put an application in there, and I've, I've been known to just make cold calls and be like, hey, back in 2014, when you put your stuff in, and they're like, where's Menucha? I'm like, we'll talk about that, right? But you do, you go in and you just find people and you reach out, and, you know, we've made 20 calls before and had one or two people that are like, yeah, let's do this. So you're not, you know, in those position pools, you're not getting that wealth of like, I'm really interested, because maybe you have somebody who's hunkered in a district and is like, that was a thing for my past, but you sometimes stumble across a gem and are able to bring them in for an interview. So that's the cool component to Apple Track, that, you know, when things get kind of a little dark on the horizon, you're like, oop, don't forget about that position pool, and you can get in there and get creative. So Apple Track is, the consortium is a really nice resource for us. Thanks for bringing that up. All right, thanks, guys.
Okay, I think that covered all of the reports. Thank you all. I know you're all working very, very hard on all of these efforts. Couple quick reminders, please take the Five Essentials families if you have not done so already. We do receive that information. It is part of our public display on how organized we're doing for our school improvement efforts, and so that's very important. Spring break is right around the corner. We have early release, early dismissal on Friday afternoon, and next week, of course, is spring break. I'm sure everybody has that on their calendar. Yeah, so get some energy. But then when we come back, we're going to jump right back into it, because it'll be time to open up for registration for next year, and it's time for IAR, the Illinois Assessment of Readiness, for our students in grades three through eight. So our staff are also getting ready for that, our leaders are, and that is an important timeframe for our students, and that's an important measure of how well we are preparing them in relation to the state standards. So those are all some things that are right around the corner in April, but for now, I wish everyone a restful spring break, and we certainly all deserve a break, for those of you who get one. The rest of you, keep charging along, because we're doing good stuff for kids every single day, and we appreciate all of your efforts. Thank you very much.
We will have a quick executive session with no action expected after executive session. So with that, I need a motion to move into executive session.
I'll make a motion.
Sorry.
Let's go!
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carries.
Aye.